Evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting of October 11th, 2023. If everybody would join me for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job to these kids.
Yeah. Okay, so I know most of our meetings start with public comment, but when we have guests first, we have them before public comment. So as in what I, what we wanted started last time where we had studies, today we have the Connolly Cubs Council, Student Council Group. And so they're going to tell us a little bit about what they do, so.
Ms. Downey, welcome.
Do I need my microphone?
Not, not with your, well, yes, because you're, you're speaking on camera, so.
You're speaking on camera, so you have.
So this is not actually our student council. Student council is only doing their elections this week, so we won't have winners until Friday. What I have is some very brave fifth graders who have been working on a project in class and two talented teachers with them who are going to explain the project. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Karen Downey. I'm the principal at the Connolly School. And I want to take the opportunity to just say thank you to the committee for all of the things that we have at the elementary level. We've never been in a better position. I said that to the superintendent several times. And the most important thing, though, is the things that kids will remember from elementary school. So while I am so proud and so pleased with everything that we have, I also understand that kids remember the things that are exciting. They're not going to remember how many minutes they did, but they are going to remember the projects that they did. And so I'm going to introduce Ms. Kay, and she's going to tell you a little bit about what our project was. And Mr. Kellcourse is also here as a brand-new first-year teacher to help her along. So, Ms. Kay.
Thank you guys so much for having us here today. We're super excited. The kids are so excited to be here to share with you some things that they've been working on. Just a little background on what you're going to be seeing tonight. Our students have been learning about inventors and inventions, and through those conversations, we were able to start thinking about the fact that the idea for an invention is really just the first step. So rather than build their inventions, these students came up with a concept for an invention and then devised a pitch that they would be giving to a potential investor or a store or somebody that would be looking to take their idea and bring it to fruition. I'm hoping some of you are maybe familiar with the TV show Shark Tank. So our students were put through the Shark Tank process. They devised a pitch, they worked together in teams, they came up with a product concept, and they were able to pitch to a group of sharks. Thank you to our Connolly staff for functioning as our sharks. They really put the kids through their paces and forced them to think on their feet, to defend their concept and their products. And I think we have some future entrepreneurs in our midst tonight. So I have pages and pages here of standards that these projects would touch on, but rather than read them to you, I will not bore you because I know you would much rather hear from the kids than from me. So we would like to introduce our first group, the Sun Tacks. Come on up, guys.
Sun Tacks, right, at DCRR, I'm Brian Foley, President of the Center.
I'm Craig Bubba.
Solar invention. We're asking for 50,000 dollars for 45% of our coverage. This invention acts as contacts that help receive sunglasses to protect you from the sun. We really hope that our Sun Tacks are the big difference in people's life. We're asking for this much because we really believe that we can improve people's lives by this new invention.
Cost of audience. Each Sun Tack costs about $50 for one pair, and we plan to sell each item for $32 for a permanent pack and $55 for a three-pack. And the contacts go to this whole box of $10. The audience of this product is intended to be for anybody who needs glasses and who does not need glasses. And wants to go. Also recommend you buy these case now, optional for parents, inside the gate. You can also sell them at the toll-free. They're totally safe.
Hi, my name is Captain Newville. Our product is a pillow that has not had any sunscreen or alcohol in it. It also does not take a much face in the contact person's way. People buy our products because they love the color and they're cheaper, smart, and don't lose weight. And they are weatherproof, you can get them in regular or prescription sizes. Our products can be used because they are reusable and first glance clear. You don't have to get a, I don't know, we can, it's optional. Get three pairs a month with the case from the company, and the starter pack with the fortune, contract, and a good sticker to wear. Buy them in an experience of the world that passes. Any questions?
Do they come in different colors?
Yes, yes.
Of course they do.
Use your eye solution proprietary to use only with those contacts. Make more money. Way to go.
Very nice.
Awesome. Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
This is our highest-end gear crew.
Sure, it's the highest end of the market. About our invention, these are high heels that can turn into sneakers. If your high heels are getting uncomfortable, then you can make them into comfy sneakers. There will be a button on the side, and you can press them and boom, they're sneakers. Press it again and boom, they're back into high heels. We are asking for $50,000 for 45% of our coverage. Cost of each, each costs about $99. $99 for 99. And the plan is to sell this stuff, and that kind of stuff, but I am sure this product is intended to be sold for $30.
Hi, my name is Alex, and I'm a student. If you're going to a wedding, you can brand new. And it says that in, and they will try to be.
Awesome idea.
I'll have, what colors do they come in?
Any color.
Any color. How about style? Yeah, all different styles, too, you're offering. Very good. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much, girl.
Awesome.
Like Kakabra, I hate numbers, I hate something mean, and I'm red. Our product is a sheet that hangs over your mouth. With that, you can upload your glasses onto the app, click. The app is glued to from any app you want. The photo or color of your choice will be on the machine. To adjust lighting, you push a button on your app. When turned all the way down, it clears you into the original light. In addition to your app, there are already choices for your choosing. Some of these choices include Madeline Sports and Innovation Sports. Lightwells can build your dreams via imagination. It'll take you anywhere in the world, just you don't have to pay for the plane tickets and the trip. Our product creates life-like experiences while staying in comfort of your home. Buy something on a tiny TV, let it be all bare-wafted. Lightwells is great for anyone who wants to change. If you're indecisive, it's great for you, too. When to buy our product, you can find it on four sheets. You can buy our product on Amazon, Best Buy, and Lightwool.com, and many more. Also, you can pre-order your measurements for your lawn. If you do not prefer, you can go to stores and you can start your trial at the measuring store you want. But I suggest that you order. This one has $10,000. Cost of each product is $250. The percentage of our company you don't see is 45%. You should invest in our product because it will make you very happy even though it's not fun. I absolutely certain this product will make an improvement in your life. Our product will make your life way more easier because one of the powers out is still in life. Thank you for listening.
Does anybody have any questions? No, I guess you made a good pitch.
Nice.
That concludes our student presentations for the evening. Thank you guys so much for hosting us, and I hope you enjoyed all of their hard work.
Awesome.
Thank you for being so brave and coming to us. We appreciate it.
Great job.
Yes, awesome.
Great, great job.
I think somebody should make a motion now. Mr. Boyce, invest in all three.
So move.
All right. We're gonna have to paint our walls. All right, yeah. Awesome. You guys are outstanding. Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for opening our meeting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody here for public comment tonight?
Hello? Let everybody file out first. Is this on? Can you hear me?
No, really.
No, I can't. I'm gonna go talk.
So I guess, how about now? Still no?
No. Jeff's gonna.
How about now? No? Well, I can yell this.
Yell it.
Thank you for serving here tonight. I understand there's something.
Your name and address.
Oh, my. Rosemary Connolly, 405 Franklin Street. I also serve on the Whitman Finance Committee. You have something on your agenda tonight, I believe, that talks about public presentations during your business, your meetings. And I wanted to point out a few things. The public has places in which they can present. Our libraries provide places in which they can have their own personal presentation, unsolicited presentations. We have public access in which you can have your own show with public unsolicited. You have anything outside of, you have a moment of public comment that allows it, you have emails that allow it. I also, and this is more for the public, I want the public to understand that school committees have very complex jobs. School committees' budgets are separate than municipal budgets, and not just regionals, but also in, in regular towns and cities, because they have to adhere to strict laws and procedures, far stricter than other budgets. And they have to meet three kind of real goals: student achievement, adhering to the laws and regulations, and a reasonable cost to the town. That's a really, that's a big ball to carry. And this is a pretty short meeting, even though some of your meetings go pretty long. It's a pretty short meeting to do that every year. So to do that task, you are provided with lots of material and resources that have been vetted. You're provided with DESI. You're provided with experts that you can solicit from DESI. You are provided with, you've provided with a superintendent. You're provided with financial advisors. To have the public come in and, a public entity come in and introduce something could end up being political theater. And it could be an abuse of the public trust that we swear to uphold. And I'm giving you an example because this occurred in, in our committee in Whitman. It occurred on the Selectmen's Committee in Whitman, and it was not intentional. But we didn't use the material, and we allowed the public to come in. Whitman Finance Committee identified a weakness in busing, and they brought it to the school probably January 2022, I think it was. After bringing it to the school, two public citizens came forward with a solution. That solution was presented in a public meeting in a finance committee. Was presented in a finance committee and publicly in a selectmen's meeting.
You need to wrap it up, Mo.
Yep, publicly in a selectmen's meeting as fact. When the public heard this, they thought, this is validated, this is true. In a meeting shortly after with DESI, that busing was determined to be fraud. I think Jay Sullivan called it fraud. And another method that was always available to the school was, was used. The current method and the proposed method still did not handle the inequity that the Finance Committee identified. It still has not been fixed. It still is inequitable to Whitman. And all of this theater had the public believing that it had been fixed and had elevated political situations where people didn't know that they actually, the people that they put forward had put to, put forward something that ended up being fraudulent, fraud.
Okay.
These same people are now seen as, as experts. And I'm concerned the same space would be given.
Thank you.
That's all.
Remember, we have three minutes, guys, for each person, so that everybody has a chance.
I'll stop my stopwatch. Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. I'm here to speak about public comment. You guys, I believe you're gonna talk about a policy or the first, first viewing of a policy on potential change to public comment. And, you know, it's, it's, for me, I don't know why this is such an important issue to me. And over the last couple of weeks, I've really been reflecting on, you know, why that would be. And it has become, over the last five or six years, something that I do feel very strongly about. But I couldn't really pinpoint exactly why. And I, even, even now, as I talk, the closest I can get to explaining why I think this is so important for me personally is because that the public is able to come to a meeting and share in the way that I'm doing now during public comment, but also when you're, when you're after your, after your deliberation and before you vote, so during your meeting, based on the particular agenda items. I think it's very important that people can actively participate in that process. The reason why, I think, is because if you've done a little bit of research on the difference between an open-town meeting and a representative-town meeting, it's kind of just like two different schools of thought. There are some people that really like an open-town meeting. They like that it's like an authentic, traditional form of government where the everyday person who's a citizen of Whitman can go to Whitman Town Meeting, and they can speak at the microphone, and everybody gets a vote. I love that. But there's also a representative-town meeting. Other towns, I think Stoughton is, is an example of a town that does a representative-town meeting. So not everybody goes to town meeting, but they, you vote for a representative to go, and there's a small collection of people who do the town's business. And you wouldn't say that one is right and the other is wrong. Both have different pros and cons. For me, I just really support an authentic-town meeting. It's just, I feel like that's, that's what I support. I feel like that's what the people of Whitman support. And I feel like it's a similar debate when you're talking about your public comment. There are some school committees that don't allow public comment. And there are some school committees that just allow the public comment at the very beginning. And I think you guys have done a pretty good job of coming up with a compromise, the beginning and the end, and, you know, educating the public about ways that if they really want to speak on a topic, they can reach out to the chair, maybe get it on the agenda. I think that the educational process about efficient ways that the public can participate is very important. But I'll wrap it up with this. But to me, it's also very important that during an important discussion, that the everyday person can come, stand at the microphone, share just a little bit, you know, on controlled amount of time, just so you guys can hear the concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Evans, Candlewood Lane, Board of Selectmen. I actually thought either of the first two speakers were gonna address this, so wasn't prepared to speak tonight. But further in your agenda is a discussion about the method of borrowing when the, you know, when the town votes to authorize borrowing for the middle-school project. And there's two decisions, basically two options laid out in front of you, level debt and level principal. To give you some historical background, the way the town has always borrowed for projects has been level principal. That way, you take a premium the first year, the payments decline each year thereafter because you're, you're paying, you're taking the, whatever, $90 million that you borrow, divided over 30 years, that's your principal payment, you pay the interest every year, to make it as simple as possible. That lets the town build other capital projects in over the 30 years we're taking that debt out. And where the town of Whitman right now is looking at projects like, you know, potentially some more work at the fire station, town hall's not getting any younger, the, you know, last work at the two elementary schools was now 25 years ago. So we have other projects on the horizon, you know, where we've always planned our projects on a, on a declining payment, you know, level principal method. That is how we've structured our capital plan, you know, to the extent that it needs to be approved. I know it does, but that's how we've been planning in the past, and I, you know, want to emphasize that my recommendation to you is to continue with level principal borrowing. I know, you know, the school is authorizing borrowing for this, as they did with the ban for the middle school, but we've always had a good partnership there. And as, you know, time came to roll over the ban, John Stamberg would call our town administrator and say, do you want to roll it over? How do you want to handle it? So there's always been some, some give and take. I just kind of like to lay out at least my preference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have approval of meeting minutes. The first is August 23rd, 2023. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion to amend.
Okay.
Minutes of August 23rd.
Second.
The motion would be on page five, last paragraph, to remove the sentence that says, Ms. Byers apologized to the committee and to the public for the complaint brought against her. Replace that sentence with, Ms. Byers stated she was sorry this campaign against her, which has the appearance of harassment, has taken up the taxpayers' time and the committee's time.
Okay.
I'm asking that my words be written into the minutes as they were spoken. Another alternative I would give, since some members in the last meeting needed to go back and look at the video to confirm my words, if anyone feels that my words are not sufficient for the minutes, then perhaps we make a motion, someone else can, to strike the entire paragraph of that agenda item. Because I don't see other topics from meetings identified as specifically as this particular agenda item with this complaint against me. So partially, I feel like even having it in the minutes is, is a further attack. But if it needs to be in there, it should be as I spoke.
Okay. Have a discussion, please, on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment?
No.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the amendment first, okay? So all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. And those opposed? And abstaining? Okay, one abstention. All right.
Motion to.
Now motion to.
August 23rd, minutes as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor? And any opposed? And abstain? Okay, one abstention. Okay, September 13th, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Good, abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I wasn't here for August and September, that's why.
Okay, very good. Okay, our next is to introduce our Student Advisory Council, our new members for this year. So who is?
I'll take care of that.
Jeff's gonna do that?
Yep, so we have, high school ran an election, and as you know, we put together a Student Advisory Council of five students, freshman to senior. And I'm happy to announce the winners, and I hope you can congratulate these winners. And as I call your name, step up, and then we'll give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves, okay? Gianna Rogiro, Genevieve Levesque, Kayla Dawson, Madeline Morris, and Brianna Codio, who I spelled, say it next. Awesome. So if you don't mind introducing yourself, telling us what grade you are, and maybe why you're interested in running, and what else you do.
Hi, and welcome. My name is Gianna Rogiro. I'm a sophomore this year up at Whitman Hansen. This year, I wanted to run just to basically get more involved. I don't know much about the school, but that was one interest I had in learning. Right now, as in this year, I'm part of, I'm on the volleyball team, but also competitively dance. I joined DECA this year to also, I have a, some interest in financial stuff. I am joining Key Club, Active Minds. I'm also part of Best Buddies, and hopefully peer tutoring in this spring as I, while working with the kids. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Genevieve Levesque. I'm a sophomore, and I decided to run because I'm super interested in voicing, like the opinions that students have. I'm super big on that. I want to make sure that the students have access to resources and certain things that they might want to get. And in school right now, I started the American Sign Language Club with my friend, and I am an AP student, but yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kayla Dawson. I'm a sophomore here at Whitman Hansen. I'm a part of Best Buddies, as well as Key Club. I get involved in school by also being in Premed Club. I ran this year because I want to express the students' opinions and mindsets on problems that may come up within our towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madeline Morris. I'm a sophomore here at the high school. I am in eight different clubs at the high school. I am two sports. I'm varsity tennis. And I joined because I want to express the feelings of the students through all three schools, and so they have a say in what happens within our community.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brianna. I'm, I think, the oldest on the committee. I'm the senior, so I'm the old part.
We're gonna keep you another year, all right? I'll keep you another year.
I do kind of do a little bit with the school. I'm president of NHS. I'm on student council. I'm publicity coordinator for that. I do Quiz Bowl, math team, I'm varsity on track. Obviously, you get to work with these lovely ladies and you guys on student advisory. I also tutor on the side, but not peer tutoring, I just do it for, like, younger kids. Um, yeah, I kind of do a little bit of everything, but I also wanted to join here because I feel like I have a voice, too, and everybody else does, and they, I guess some people find solace in me, and I would like to speak their matters even if they feel uncomfortable and don't feel like they can, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Brianna's also my target lady at Target Hanover. All my wife drive up and pick up. She's the lady, right there.
Yeah, you need an in.
You all have an in right now, right?
Well, thank you, ladies, and sophomores and seniors, so you're the boss then. You're in charge and, you know, get them going correctly. But it's nice to see, obviously, a very strong sophomore class, to have four of you on there. But we're very pleased to have you, looking forward to working with you and having your information given to us each month. Thank you very much for doing this.
So I, to the committee, I explained, I met with the ladies today, let them raid my candy jar a little bit. We talked a little bit about their role. They'll be meeting every, every month, their month with, with you folks. Part of our goal, along with David, who's the representative from the committee to work with them, is to branch them out, the folks out to the middles and the elementaries too, so that they're just not a high school representative voice. We talked a lot about a representative voice for all. So that's gonna be their task, to bring to you different thoughts from the student body, pre-K to 22, through their eyes, through their voice. body, K pre-K to 22, through their eyes, through their voice, and also learn what this committee does. We had a discussion about what your role is, and how some meetings can go really long. When I said quarter of 11, I thought they were going to fall off their seat. But what government is like, and sometimes the challenges of working around finances and policy, when there's not a lot of money in the pot to share. So I think we have some really strong leaders here, and I think a representative voice of our school. It's not senior dominated, like we've had in the past, we have some sophomores and other students that ran. I think there were 12 students that ran for this position.
I think we had 15, the most ever by far, yeah, it was double last year, it was a good amount. Sorry to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
Well, yeah, we had a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of people got involved, a lot of people reached out to ask me questions. I think we're going to have a great opportunity to expand student voice. I know Riley, Emma, and Noah last year really kind of set that foundation on what we want to do, and kind of reaching out to other districts, or reaching out to other schools within the district, and hopefully get a presentation. So we're going to figure out ways to get more perspective. I'm going to work with the students to give them kind of the purview of the school committee, understand what their role is, hopefully we can get some knowledge, give them a good understanding of the current events, like the new middle school project going on, and hopefully we can get their perspective, get an accurate pulse of what is going on in students' lives, how things are impacting them, give them that opportunity to speak at the podium, and then, you know, from there, hopefully we can build upon it, and then when we get towards budget season, hopefully they can then give a presentation from all the perspectives of all the students they've reached out to, in different student councils in each school building, and then from there, hopefully we can take that information, and then the school committee members advocate for them, and actually put forward a budget that's going to advocate for services and put us where we need to be, because that's our job. So hopefully we can get that done, yeah.
So thanks, folks, appreciate it. Sorry to interrupt.
This isn't, I'm sorry, just a comment, just from observations from last year. When we think about going and getting student voice from the other schools, so last year, when we talk about the student councils, just anecdotally, the student council at Indian Head is 15 students of the whole school. I don't think, and I said this last year, I don't think that that's an appropriate, like, witness test for the vibe of that school and those students, so just, I'm sure the advisory kids who were there have ideas. And I, I think, you know, as a high school teacher, I think that perhaps some of the girls got involved too, because maybe, I feel like at a high school, there's a lot more opportunity to be involved than in elementary school and middle school. You know, it's kind of student council or nothing, not necessarily, but just making sure that we're getting all aspects of the population when we get the feel for the community and the schools, so.
That's a great point, Helen, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Don?
For you to David, I just want to also see, make sure that they have access or are aware that on Instagram is the mass student reps, so in addition to working within our district, but there are, they can gain knowledge through other student reps and so forth.
And to touch base on Don's point, that's a great, great point she made, I reached out to, I forget his name, Sean, I forget Sean's last name, but he's the president and founder of the Massachusetts Association of Student Advisory, Student Council, I believe, and I touched base with him and a couple other students, and told him that we were going to reach out to him, and hopefully we can get some workshops going, or maybe some Zoom meetings to get his perspective. I also sent over during the initial ballot information, when I reached out to students, gave them information on the Instagram account, as well as the main website for student advisories at the Massachusetts state level, so hopefully they have something they can read in their free time, and also see other examples of what's going on in the school district.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay.
As I said to you folks, if you want to stay for the meeting, you can most certainly, cut out any time you want, okay? There's no, you don't have to stay till the last gallon, okay? So again, look forward to working with you folks. Superintendent's goals, so last, last month, I submitted some goals, met with a few folks to discuss them. I have also given you the rubric, which is right off the DESI website, as far as what you will be looking at through the course of the year, with my goals as we do this evaluation again this year. If I just want to say, like, off the record, what we saw with the Conley students right there, that's the goal. That's getting students empowered to feel comfortable enough to give a presentation in front of 10 folks on camera, live. And that's what we're trying to build in our elementaries, as building blocks in the middle, and then really doing the finishing touches, these students right here as they walk out the door. That's really the overarching goal, to give our students the best opportunity to do whatever they want to do once they receive that diploma. As you can see, I'm evaluated under four standards, instructional leadership, management operations, community engagement, and professional culture. So the goals I've submitted to you, and I'm just going to read the goal and the action step for this year. Under standard one, instructional leadership, the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff, of staff, by cultivating a shared learning vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. This is under our strategic plan, strategic objective number three, curriculum. Provide a comprehensive, innovative, and culturally responsive curriculum that fosters engaged and adaptable students who have the foundational skills that can be universally applied in an ever-changing role. The action step this year is in recognition of our strategic objective in DESI's educational vision, the district is continuing its partnership with the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy, we're in year two. We are in this DESI partnership in year two. Our goal for the year is focusing on our high-need students and also preparing the staff for the implementation of a new evaluation rubric that highlights culturally responsive practices in all classrooms and lessons. This rubric is going to, going to affect for our teachers next year. So the rubric that you see here for me is going to be adjusted for teachers next year with a category under culturally responsive classrooms. So we're working with the DESI in our partnership with them to make sure it's implemented, which will benefit our kids, but also give our teachers the building blocks of how they're going to be evaluated next year. Under standard two, management and operations, promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. Under our strategic objective five, staff recruitment, development, and retention, create an environment that is diverse, inclusive, and engaging to attract, develop, and retain highly qualified staff. Off the cuff, we haven't lost staff a lot, but that is a concern moving forward, that as the economy moves and people shift, we potentially could lose highly qualified staff to better-paying or different districts. The action step, as noted in strategic objective three and four, the district is committing time and resources to create an environment that is welcoming for all staff and students. The action step is to work with multiple agencies that focus on attracting educators from diverse backgrounds, while also working, or working to strengthen the professional development offering for which our current staff can benefit and grow. So I'm working with our consultant from DESI, his name is Colin Rose, to make sure that we're branching out to attract a diverse teaching population for our students. As our diversity changes within our district, we need to adjust and adapt to make sure kids are seeing people that look like them, who talk like them, and have a cultural background as them. Another goal under here, under strategic objective six, resources fiscal, human, and physical. Commit to efficient planning, acquisition, and allocation of fiscal, human, and physical resources to achieve the mission and vision of the district. Action step, the district, with school committee input, will continuously monitor the enrollment trends of all student groups to work and maximize efficiency and planning for these groups. Staffing, resources, and needs will be analyzed to maximize budgetary efforts, and also the successful passing and continued work with the MSBA for a new Whitman Middle School is a high priority. So under standard three, community engagement, community engagement promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through efficient partnerships with families, communities, organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of our school and district. Strategic objective four, community and culture, provide a welcoming and affirming school environment that removes barriers, one where students, staff, families, and community members feel valued and have a sense of belonging. The action step under this is, in order to create a better sense of belonging, students in elementary and middle schools participate in a WIN block, and WIN stands for what I need now, four times a week to reinforce skills based on their needs assessments. You'll be hearing where our needs assessments are next month. The unique aspect of this is that's led by, that is led by adults in the building who may not be the teacher of record for the student, thus expanding opportunities for positive adult-student connections. The high school will be implementing their WIN for the school year 2024, 25. The second way the district is hoping to strengthen this belonging within the community is being awarded the Family Engagement Grant through DESI, we're in the queue, whereas the goal is to strengthen the ties at an earlier age for student and families within Whitman and Hansen, so the connection is stronger entering grade nine. The application is under review, and the award date will be forthcoming. And I don't know the target number for that grant, it's a highly competitive grant. Under standard four, professional culture, promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture reflective, of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. Under strategic objective two, communication, develop effective communication strategies that increase mutual understanding, engagement, and empowerment. Beginning in July 2023, the district began using and is continually implementing the engagement of a communication dashboard, school status, it's a new communication device that we have. School status provides indispensable solutions for educators to harness data, and with it, communicate effectively to build strong relationships with all key stakeholders engaged in a child's success. It provides translation functions in both email and text, along with the ability to send out mass communication, and also two-way text communication. From a student educational perspective, teachers are able to see academic and social, emotional trends via attendance, discipline, demographics, et cetera, for individuals and groups. Given the comprehensive nature of the platform, the district implementation team is rolling out various aspects and usage in small incremental steps for full access by the end of the school year. So it's a new communication tool, however, it's more than just, when we used to just send out a communication message, this translates for our staff, but for the teacher, it also shows their class attendance, the discipline of students, meaning if a student's out for discipline, and just trends within their classroom. It's a great tool. This is the same goal as before, but under community and culture, so providing a welcoming and affirming school environment that removes barriers, one where students, staff, and families, and community members feel valued and have a sense of belonging. Again, this action step, one way the district is hoping to strengthen the belonging of the community is being awarded the Family Engagement Grant through DESI to strengthen the ties at an earlier age of families from Whitman and Hansen through grade nine. This application is under review. However, I put down below, if we don't get that, I've disbanded my coffee hours for this year. I'm moving at a different approach to speak to families and parents. Coffee hours, I had one to two parents per, and I couldn't get more people to go, so I'm going to, it doesn't mean I'm not going to have them occasionally, but I'm going to hit PTO, PAC, LPAC, CPAC, and also, like I said, just a coffee hour, and being more visible around the communities at different events, where people can grab me off the cuff. I've been involved with the building projects, so we've had the town forums, things like that. And again, the coffee hours aren't off the table, but based upon time and what I've been able to get from those, the people at my PTOs are the people coming to that coffee hour as well. So I'm going to try to double up my efforts there. Again, those are the goals as presented to you. We did some reflection over the summer as part of a self-assessment with my team, meaning central office, principals, based on my evaluation last year, and then looking at data where student scores were of their, of their third assessment for the year, put together these goals that I think will move the district forward as a district, will help each individual student as they progress throughout the course of the school year. So any questions, and then I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
No move.
Yes.
No question.
Question.
I just have some questions. I have a question. I don't know if I have a question or some questions. For the WIN blocks?
Yep.
Are you planning, and it, are you planning to expand this goal? So like, the way I envision it is, you have them implemented this year, and you might see, if you're collecting data from the students, right, the benchmarks that they're doing, are you going to present data to us this year, and then maybe continue this as a goal next year to show, like, more growth in it, if that makes any sense? Because like, that's, it's very similar to like the Titan Time that we have. My kids love the WIN block, like, they love being with a new teacher, they love being with different kids, it doesn't seem like work for them, right? So I just, with this one, I think providing the committee with data to show, like, in October, because they just started this week or last week?
Correct, last week, yep.
You know, right now, this is where these kids were, here's where they are now, you know, so we can really see how those targeted interventions are working, because it's great to say this is what they're doing, but having the data to back it up is better.
So yes, on all three, and again, the reason I think this is, we put together this as a goal, because when we put the interventions in place, it was COVID time, and we talked a lot about learning loss. Now we're going to talk about learning gain. And this has a financial impact on the district, using the interventionists outside the classroom teacher. So each building has two, we have district-wide interventionists as well. So yes, the data's going to be really important, especially after, George and Nikki are going to present in November on MCAS and our first assessment, and then in February after our assessment, and you'll be able to see the progress. And the cool thing about WIN is that it's not just students who are struggling, students who are actually moving forward get the benefit of that and move forward past what might be happening in the classroom.
And I think that that, like, personally, I think that that's a bigger and more valuable inter, like, the students who are struggling are always going to get the help that they need, it's your kids who are proficient and advanced who need to be pushed, and this provides that for those students, which I think is really great.
That's why I think the name WIN, and it's being circulated across the South Shore, so we didn't invent this, but what I need. So I'm not struggling, but I could do better. So there's somebody pushing me. Other questions?
So the hiring of staff can be based on race and not entirely merit, because we want kids to have staff that looks like them?
So, so a simple answer is, no, we don't hire on the basis of race. However, when I say trying to bring people in, I don't get a very diverse group of people applying for our jobs. So I need to look at different markets, meaning, and when I say markets, we use SchoolSpring as a tool. SchoolSpring is really focused in on educators. Some of my colleagues are using indeed, and in different forms, to see how we can get different people of just diversity into apply for our jobs. The hiring process is different, but I just want people to be able to apply, and also say to our students of color, of different religions, of different cultural backgrounds, yeah, we do have candidates that come in and want to work for Whitman Hansen. We do struggle against some of our urban population, or urban districts, to draw staff that don't necessarily look like every teacher in Whitman Hansen.
Of course, you want everyone to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I want people to apply. And I'm looking at different ways to solicit that, but that has nothing necessarily to do with the hiring process. But I need to know different avenues, because I'm condensed into where I'm at right now. So I need some assistance in that, and that's why we're talking to different folks.
And, yeah, I want to just add to that, too, the Mass Teachers Association, this has always been a problem, with Mass Teachers Association, that's one of their goals has always been to try to get more people and applying for the jobs, and people just aren't. And, you know, it's, we can say, oh, we welcome anybody, but if you don't get the people applying, you know, so that's what Jeff is trying to do, but Mass Teachers as a whole has always worked on that, and they've found it very difficult, they need people going into the profession, of, you know, diverse people going into the profession and trying to welcome them into the profession and be highly qualified teachers. I mean, you don't base on a color or a race or anything, because you have to be highly qualified to get your certification now. It's very, very strict, just to be qualified.
So just to be qualified is based?
Yeah, it's not an easy task anymore, yeah.
But part of this goal, Steve, is to also look for my paraprofessionals, my coaches, people that, I'm not, I'm not getting people to apply anyway, so I'm just trying to get a diverse group of folks anywhere in, on the South Shore, right? We did, you guys did, you guys did a nice job, really, and I appreciate that, with our, with our contracts this year. So we did a nice job, but now it's that attraction. What makes Whitman Hansen this, and we're accepting of all folks. So that's one of the goals this year.
Yeah. And I understand the thought of how a student, maybe not, maybe new to the country a few years or so, or feeling more comfortable opening up to a teacher, and that's, it's more welcoming, I understand that.
Qualified teacher.
But you wouldn't want someone turned away, or say, I didn't get the job because, or I got the job, did I get it because I'm qualified or because of my race?
We have pretty high standards.
That's the problem with affirmative action, you know, it's, did you ever, why did you get accepted or get that job in the first place? There's always that lingering doubt.
We hired qualified folks, and I mean, that's, the process, I think, is very vetted. But again, the goal for me is to really look, look to draw multiple people, so we have a wide variety to choose from.
So it's based on merit, but you want. So it's based on merit, but you want, all the applications, so you want the quality. Yes.
No, no, I was just gonna say, it's like a sports team, you know, you want every kid, every college player to try out, but in the end, you're only taking the best players. So you don't, you know, you don't care where they come from, or you know, as long as they're the best. You try to build the best team.
Absolutely correct.
That's right. That's what we try to do here. Okay.
Oh, Don has a question.
Okay, Don?
Thanks. So Jeff and I have got to discuss, so thanks for your time. And I did make a comment that I felt like some of the goals, or at least one of the goals, is fairly broad, and I was hoping to see maybe something narrowed down. Specifically, it's on page two, right? It's the bottom part of number two, so it's right before number three, standard three. So where it mentions the superintendent will review on an ongoing basis, class size, special ed programs, EL needs and work to maximize the efficiency of the budget to provide the essential services that all students need to have access to quality education. That explanation follows the action step, which pretty much says the same, that you'll work with the committee's input to monitor enrollment trends. I guess I'm looking for a little more specificity around, you know, how we would measure that and what that would look like, maximizing the efficiency of the budget to provide essential services. When I read that, it kind of looks like a mission statement, right? Like, that sounds great. You're gonna maximize the budget and make sure everyone has what they need. So to really drill in, I would honestly wanna go back to your goal last year, and we talked about this, and member Scriven mentioned it at the last meeting about start times. So one could also say, you know, what students need may be, as some expressed, right, a change in the start time. So how would you be looking at the budget to make that happen? I know you put forward options. I know the majority of the committee did not choose to go forward with any. However, that doesn't say that that topic can't still be looked at. I just have two other quick questions. I think you could point to the WIN blocks as a student achievement learning goal, because the goals do ask you to, or really regulations point out a student achievement and then a professional practice. So if you would have anything related to professional improvement or professional practice. And then lastly, just the last one, under the school status, I've heard good things about this in the communication. So my ask, I would really like to be able to see what does full access look like? So in that goal, it says by the end of the year, full access. And how are we notifying parents that this is available? I've heard some feedback that after the fact, they realize it went to SPAM. So are we somehow on a one-to-one basis communicating with families or maybe, you know, staff, making sure a message goes out if we're looking for feedback back, that we're getting that, that they're aware of this is available?
Okay.
So I think that would be a measurement for us, or me as a committee at the end of the year, to know what full access is.
Ellen, did you have something more?
Yeah, I just, and I'll just reiterate what I said at the last meeting, we talked about the goals that I don't think, like I keep seeing the Whitman, not keep seeing, maybe I just keep looking at the same page, but you're talking about Whitman Middle School. I find it, I worry when you make goals, Jeff, that depend on budgets and votes from the people in the town. So I would just, it looks like the Whitman Middle School is kind of the only one that falls under that category. You could argue that class size and those kinds of things do as well, but you have only so much control over that. And so I would just caution. And I also, you know, looking at the rubric and stuff, you know, I don't know, I know that every year that I've evaluated you, I comment that this was dependent on the budget, and you know, that's why, you know, just because it doesn't get met or achieved, and it's a budgetary piece, you know, if you kind of go through and tease those out, that might help with the evaluations in the long run.
Anybody else? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, so I was holding my comment to discussion, but if we're gonna comment now, I'd be up to.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah. Because we probably won't have a discussion, because this is it.
Yeah, so I just wanted to comment to say that I'm very pleased to see the focus on things like culture and engagement. I've certainly been beating that drum for many years. You know, I've been around here, you know, for as long as I have, whether in the committee or otherwise, there's always been a focus on student achievement and student athlete, athletic achievement. But the research is pretty clear that kids, you know, do best when they feel comfortable, when they feel proformed, and they feel like they have a stake in the game, and they have a voice, and things like that. So to me, that's step one. And so, you know, I'm glad to see there's a focus with this to improve our culture and engagement, because that's what really is gonna ultimately lead to the success of our students. I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Okay, so I have a motion, but was there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've had the discussion. Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Just raise your hands. Okay, and opposed? And abstentions? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next part?
That's you.
Yeah, it's me, and the norms. So what I'd like to do, I know Steve is not here, and I keep wanting to have the whole committee here. So what I figured what we do is, if anybody has a norm that they would like to suggest, and then we'll look them over, and we'll come back next meeting and make sure that we are concise with them. So, and if somebody gives the same norm that you were gonna give, just say same as so-and-so, okay? So that I know that there's a couple people who wanted the same. So Chris, do you have a norm?
I do. Are we gonna be given an opportunity to explain why we think it's important, or?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, so I think, you know, we all should remember that we're one of ten, and, you know, we best serve our committee and our constituents when we act as a committee. You know, I was very, very alarmed and concerned at our joint meeting with the selectmen, boards, the select boards, and, you know, our committee to discuss the budget. And I hadn't even sat down, and I was made aware that one committee member from the school committee had arranged for a deal to be struck. And I think that is way out of bounds for any individual member to speak for the committee. And I think the more we do that, the worse position we're gonna be in. And in general, I think it's a good idea to, you know, keep our own personal agendas in check, and remember that, again, that we are one of ten.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Frank?
I need to respond to that.
Well.
Well, I feel an explanation.
All right, just quick, okay, because this is just norms.
A deal wasn't struck. The parameters of what would be acceptable to the folks on the other side of the table, that was what was, okay? We still had to vote, and we still had the opportunity for deliberation and to go back and forth. Unfortunately, we were up against the gun at the very last hour, and somebody needed to show the leadership that quite frankly hadn't been shown prior to that by the current chair. And getting.
Come on, that's really, this is ridiculous.
So much for norms.
No, this is ridiculous. Sorry, can we move on?
All right, guys.
Are we gonna have a chance to discuss this? I mean, I could do a formal complaint, do all that, if you wanted to, Fred. I thought we discussed this as a committee.
All right. It's over? That's a norm. Okay, he gave his norm. Do we have another norm?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I can move on. Two that I found, if you don't mind if I share two, that have been really beneficial, I think in my own experience, and amongst my colleagues on the school committee, has been communication and collaboration, you know? And if I could elaborate more on that, you know, when I first came on board, it wasn't always easy, right? We always see things eye to eye, and we don't always do. But I think it's been beneficial, and I'll use a couple examples, whether it's been Mr. Boys or Mr. Scriven over here, Ms. Byers, they've always been receptive, whether it's Michelle or Hillary, I mean, it's basically been everyone at this point, but people have always been open to either going out, having a cup of coffee, or they've been nice enough to drive me home, and we've had these opportunities to talk and hear other perspectives. And I think just taking a moment, just to, you know, outside of the meeting, it doesn't mean to deliberate, but just understand who we are and where we're coming from, and try to empathize in that regard and understand our perspective, and why we're doing this, and where we're coming from when we take certain actions. I think just being able to understand and communicate in that regard has helped benefit our teamwork and collaboration in that. And I think in return, it's made us more receptive and more trusting to other people's approaches. And when we reach out, and I know an example I think of, is I reached out to Mr. Scriven last year about a policy proposal, and we had a great discussion, and they invited me to the policy subcommittee meeting, and I thought it was very good, the discussion that was had. And I think just having those type of collaborations and those efforts and understand where we're coming from, I think it makes to a better point. And, you know, we don't always see eye to eye. At the end of the day, you know, we may have different votes, but I know when I sit here amongst these people on, at this table, I believe that you guys sincerely care about the community. And I don't believe, I always felt that way, but I do believe it amongst this group of people. And I will fight hard to support them, even if I don't agree with their position, because everyone here is my colleague, and we are one school committee, and I support all of you, and I wanna make sure you're all be respected and cared about, and then I will do what I can. So that's kind of what helped me and my own personal growth, and hopefully growth amongst my colleagues, and hopefully this year will be more effective than the last and the one before that. And going forward, hopefully we can grow and build upon that foundation. So I know we have, you know, some charged discussion, I understand, you know, there's a lot of strong opinions and thoughts in the room, but I think, you know, we need to take a step back and remember who we are. We are leaders. We are leaders of this public board, and we need to control ourselves and make sure we act responsibly, because there's people watching us. We have a major middle school vote in a few weeks. Let's not lose sight of that. Let's have control of who we are. I respect all of you. Let's have cordial discussion. Let's get past, let's list a couple norms, and then when Mr. Boys comes back, because he's skipping out of Bruins game, you know, then let's move forward and we'll have some good discussion. So I just remember that, and thank you, everyone.
Okay, another one. Go ahead.
So the one, I did some research to see, and a lot of other school committees in their policy manual have, like the first page is like a pretty clear, like here are five norms. And one that kept popping up, so this isn't one I created, I looked it up, and once action, meaning a vote by the school committee has been taken, the committee members will support the official position of the committee. I think for us, there have been a lot of incidences, and I am only speaking to the last four years, three and a half years, where we voted on something and someone doesn't agree, and they might post about their disagreement, or it comes up on an agenda, and it just leads us to spin our wheels, and we're having the same conversations over and over again. We have business that we need to do, and so once, and you don't have to support it and say, we're doing this, but you know what? The committee voted, that conversation is over. With that, you know, the time to discuss our viewpoints, you know, if we're gonna vote on school choice, I'll use that as an example, the time to have those conversations with people in the community, to send emails, or is prior to when that public hearing and that vote's going to be taking place, not after it's been taken place, not to go to the fields and talk bad about the vote that the committee took or anything like that. I think that that makes us look disjointed, and that's part of the problem that we're, I think, why we got to these norms, right? Where we're trying to bring things together. So that's one that I would like to add.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Anybody else with something different? Okay, well, I have a couple of my own. I'd like us to come with an open mind. Come to a meeting with an open mind. Try to, that would be encompassing some of what's being said here about listening. So listening and come with an open mind, so that you hear everybody's opinion. You might not agree with it, but we come with an open mind. Think before you speak. Intent versus impact, okay? What are you intending to say versus what kind of impact do you want? Are you trying to make an impact, or do you have an intent that is purposeful, that is important to what we're talking about? I think we all need to think about that. And, you know, kind of what you said, but treat one another as professionals. We all got elected to this position, okay? Treat us, treat it how you wanna be treated. I mean, that's, right, the golden rule. But, you know, we're professionals in this position, and, you know, we need to do that. And one other one just to think about, for every complaint, have a suggestion how it can change. If you have a complaint about something, have a suggestion, don't just complain, have a suggestion how it can be fixed. Okay? So I'll write down what the ones I have and the ones I've suggested. I'll put, Jeff and I will sit down, we'll put them together in a more succinct way, and we can look at them the next meeting and vote that these are our norms. Okay? Is that agreeable? If anybody thinks of anything before then, if they could let me know, or let Jeff know. Okay, I would appreciate it. All right, thank you for your input, everybody.
Thanks, folks. MCAS, we will report out in November on MCAS. It's gonna be a detailed report. We put MCAS scores in your packet, so you can review them over the next month. George and Nikki actually presented on MTSS in Florida at a conference. It went well, it was a Zoom conference and an in-person, they had high attendance at both. So I don't wanna take away their presentation, but it's gonna be MTSS, MCAS, and then Mike Loesch is gonna do special education as well. So just a reading item on MCAS, we did okay. We have areas that we can grow, and we have areas that we knew we're doing better. Our kids are learning, and that's a good thing. So again, I don't wanna get too into the weeds with MCAS. We will be giving out MCAS scores to parents at conferences. We try to save on postage, so parents pick them up when they're at conferences. Parents that don't come to conferences, we mail them up. So we've been doing that for years. So be prepared for a lengthy, I wanna say lengthy, presentation on MCAS and our first assessment, interim assessment in November. The MASC conference is November 8th, 9th and 10th. We don't have a delegate yet. I need a delegate if somebody's gonna go and vote on those, on the resolutions. Now, I apologize, we usually get the resolutions in our office, we didn't get a copy. I don't know if you guys got a copy in the mail on the resolutions, which is good.
I didn't get it in the mail. I got it in the office.
Okay.
You came to the office.
So if we have anyone on the committee that's gonna go and wants to be a delegate, in the past, we've discussed the resolutions here and how that delegate is gonna represent our committee. So if we don't have a delegate, I don't think we need to talk about the resolutions, but if we have a delegate, we probably need to go over the resolutions. And I did highlight, some of the resolutions directly have an impact on our district. So that's open to you, you folks. I'm going to the conference, I'll be there the 8th, 9th and 10th, but I can't vote.
So I was just gonna add, if nobody is able to be a delegate, I will offer, otherwise if someone's able to, I might be associate delegate if that person can't attend, but I'll pull myself up there if nobody else is able to.
We found out that the voting is on the Wednesday, the first day, in the afternoon.
It's 3:30.
3:30.
And where's the exact location again?
It's a difference.
Well, it's gonna be different. It's on the Cape, it's at the Irish Village or Irish Cottage. It's changed from the Hang Ais Conference Center. And I could have two. I have an official voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate.
Right, that's what I was talking about before.
But I just need to submit that to Glenn by the 20th.
Can we vote by proxy?
That I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know. I think it's an in-person, I think, I don't know. I haven't, I'm not involved.
When I went last year was in-person, there were no proxy votes, so I'm not sure.
I'll make a motion to name David as the delegate. Needs a motion.
Anybody else? Interesting, it's really impactful, it's very interesting to go to, but a lot of the sessions that they have are excellent, and they're good for learning more about school committee, learning more about financial information, just about anything to do with school committees. So if anybody wants to go, even if you can just go for a day, just let Jeff know, the expenses are paid by our district, so, if you want. And if you wanna stay overnight, that's also reimbursed, because it's part of our school committee budget. So if anybody would like to, just let us know before the 20th, so we can sign up. And it's very.
Would we be discussing these resolutions now?
I'd like to. I think we need to, if David is the person of choice, I think it's worthwhile to have that discussion.
Because I don't think we're gonna meet again, we're not.
No, we're not. And the only other suggestion was if we got a person later for all of us to comment and send the information to Jeff, how they felt about each resolution. to comment and send the information to Jeff, how they felt about each resolution. But since David has been, we do have them, they're in your packet.
I think you need a vote.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we need a vote.
We have a vote, a motion in a second, just to approve David as the delegate.
Yeah. Okay. So all in favor of David as a delegate? Okay, unanimous?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so we have eight resolutions. So the first one is full stable funding for Metco. I'm not going to read all the whereas's, okay? It's just, we therefore it be resolved at the end, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the governor and the legislature to create a stable funding structure to support Metco and its partner districts that fully funds the support provided by Metco and the cost of services delivered by Metco's partner districts. So this, Metco was started in 1966, so it's been ongoing. Yes, Fred?
Now, the only problem I have is Metco is Boston and the connecting suburbs.
Correct.
It doesn't impact us. It doesn't affect, impact so many communities within the Commonwealth of Mass. I don't know why MAS C is taking a stand on something that's Boston-related. I would be against, you know, seeing funds go to one particular area where it cannot be shared with all.
And I also, you know, because that could be said about a few of them, because like this one on regional transportation, everybody's not a region, too. So that's, you know, so you can still vote on it or not. Michelle? Not Michelle. Hillary? I'm sorry.
I was going to wait a minute. I know.
Okay.
Good surprise there.
Sorry, Michelle.
What can I do?
It's like you're in class, and the teacher called you.
I don't know if anyone knows the answer to this, but what is the difference between Metco, I mean, this is going to sound like a silly question, because I kind of know the answer, but I don't. But school choice and Metco have similar ideas, right? But Metco is kind of pulling students from Boston to the communities by. So they're asking for more than essentially the school choice funding that they get, right?
Yeah, because they get transported and everything. Where school choice, our children do not get trans, Metco, they get transportation, and all that is covered.
A school choice student has to cover their transportation.
Yes, all that is covered.
And I don't know if, because each school that has Metco has a Metco director, hired staff, and I don't know if that offsets the district's budget through Boston, through this, or the district has to pay for that own, for their own director.
And when you do a resolution, we can also take no stance. So, you know, if you rather not take a stance, because it doesn't affect us, we don't have to, David doesn't have to put in a vote for it. So just to let you know. So how does.
I would motion to take no stance.
Okay, motion to make no stance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the no stance taken, please raise your hand. One, two, three, six. Okay, six. And against?
What's that other option against?
Two.
Abstain?
Abstain, yeah.
No.
Okay, now, and then abstain. Okay, Resolution two is regarding investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures. So this is that the Mass Association of School Committees prevail upon the Office of State Auditor to investigate the bidding practices of school transportation providers, and to present such findings and recommendations as may be necessary to contain costs and make more efficient transportation services available for public schools.
So just a quick question. Do you guys know by any chance, like, why this was recommended as a resolution sponsored by Votek? The same one, nobody's chance?
By Southeastern Votek?
Yeah.
So I can take a guess. So one of the things, we did get a FOIA request from the auditor's office already on transportation, because I think what they're looking at is only, the companies are bidding, but only one company's bidding per area. And I think that's part of it, and I vote.
Collusion.
I'm not sure if they have their own buses, but I think they're involved. It's part of that issue.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's collusion.
I know, a few years ago, this was discussed heavily at the conference. It seems that, as you just said, I know when we put ours out to bid, we gave up, what, three bid packets?
Yep.
And got one bid from first student, and that was it. Something just doesn't seem right. They don't compete. Like Lucini Bus Transportation is over in East Bridgewater. You would think they'd want to bid with us, but we get nothing.
We get nothing.
So I would be very much in favor of that.
Dawn?
Through you chair to David, I was just going to mention, I did go to one of the MAS C conferences before as the delegate. So the Southeastern, who this is sponsored by, they'll stand up at that time, and they'll speak specifically. I'm sure Jeff is.
Oh, and like elaborate further as to why.
They will say, we are Southeastern. We bring this forward, and they'll say first.
Oh, all right, cool.
They'll explain it all.
And just one other question, not to go back, but when we get back to Resolution one, and it's time for me to vote, I'm just abstaining on that because we're not taking a stance. All right, just make a short.
Motion to support Resolution two.
Second.
All in favor. Okay, unanimous on that one. David? So that's a big yes. Regional transportation and the end of it, be it, let it therefore be resolved that in such case where a pupil resides greater than one and one-half mile from the school of attendance, measured by a commonly traveled route, and the commonwealth reimbursement does not fully cover the amounts expended for such transportation, the regional school district may allow pupils to opt out of such transportation, or may charge a fee that in aggregate may not exceed the differential between the amounts expended for furnishing transportation and the commonwealth reimbursement. And then it goes on to be further resolved to provide regional districts the ability, if so desired, to charge a transportation fee that in aggregate cannot exceed the differential between that and the commonwealth reimbursement and the regional school district transportation expense for any pupil that resides greater than one and one-half mile from the school of attendance measured by commonly traveled routes. Pupils may opt out of transportation, may not, and not be subject to a transportation fee. This has always been a question, why can't we charge? So that's what this resolution is. Okay, so do I have a question?
You could only charge the difference in cost. My question would be, whereas we get paid for every student that's eligible now, if this actually went into effect and a parent said, well, I'm opting out because I'm driving my kid, even though they drive their child now, we still get paid, per se, for that seat on the bus, and that seat on the bus is available to that child. If this goes through, we may actually lose money out of that, from my interpretation.
So the way I read this a little bit, the committee would have to adopt that policy in the law to say, we are going to charge. If we don't say anything, we can still keep, we're not, we're not, we're going to take what the state gives us and not allow, we're not going to bill a student. This gives us the ability to bill that student?
I think it's only if they.
I was talking about the opt-out language.
Yeah, but I think it's only if you're going to charge.
If you're going to charge.
If you're going to charge, a person can opt out.
Right.
But not, not like now. They can't opt out now.
But this is just changing the law to allow a district to do that.
Yes.
Motion to accept this resolution.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of adopting this one. Okay, unanimous. Resolution three. Okay, Resolution four, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this is MAS C recommends that all districts adopt the position of D E I coordinated to work towards anti-racism in the school district. So.
Motion to accept this resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have any questions?
I wonder, I thought I saw something in language.
We kind of have this already. We have it already.
The only, the only question I have on this is you're putting a title to a person. We have that person in place. And I, I don't, if it has to be a certain, specific title, that makes me a little anxious, because we hired Nikki as the Director of Equity and MTSS. If the state comes across and puts it into law that I need a D E I director, do I have to rename that person and then take away other responsibilities? That's the only question that I have, and that would be a question I would, I would go through you about that, you know, or a person that fits that role, you know?
Yeah, well, another thing I was just going to add, too, if there's maybe, like you're saying, like, if there's questions or further comments that you guys want me to ask during the meeting, maybe we can go over that now, and then either you chair or Jeff sends that over to me through email, and then I can ask it then.
Yeah, that's what you do. So that's what the discussion is. So you hear what we have to say. So you can always get up and speak and tell why we voted that way, or what our question is. And that's a question right there. And then if the question doesn't feel to be answered, we can vote on that here and say, this is the reason we didn't vote for it, because we were concerned about establishing a name to a position. So what do we have on this one? Yes, Glenn?
So are they saying that if a district doesn't have this position right now, they will be, it'll be mandatory that they have a coordinator? And is there any districts that don't have someone doing this job right now?
Sure. These are just recommendations.
Yes.
This does not mean it goes to law.
Okay.
These are recommendations by the school committee, the Mass School Committee.
Who do they make these recommendations to?
To the state.
Okay.
Well, actually, no, in this case, it's to the district.
Well, this is.
Back to the district.
Just the district recommendation.
Yeah.
So we're voting to recommend something back to ourselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there are, there are.
But we are something we already have. We're recommending that we get something we already have.
But we're just concerned with the name, the type.
Yeah, I get it. We already have, and we don't need it.
I make a motion to not support.
We have a motion on the table, though. We have a motion.
Oh, she already made a motion to support.
She made him to accept. Okay.
Dave seconded.
All right. So, all right, all in favor to accept this, please raise your hands. Okay, one, two, three, four. And to not accept this, one, two, three, four, five, five, four. So, you know, you can speak on that, David, if you want.
Yeah, and elaborate more on why we came to that position.
Right. That we had a kind of a, kind of a split vote. All right, so this is Mass School Building Authority. This is interesting. So this is that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee calls upon the legislature to amend Chapter 70B, Section 7, by removing the $800 million cap, and be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Building, call upon the Mass School Building Authority to reinstate the accelerated repair program for 2024 applications, and be it further resolved that the Mass Association of School Committees call upon the Mass Legislature to allow public preschools to be included in the accelerated repair and core program. I think it should also say.
Motion to support.
Second.
I think it also says play about allowing for auditorium.
Yeah, right.
But put an amendment to that.
I see, right.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Can I, I just want to add discussion. This would be so helpful for our Duval Elementary School, where we've been in a holding pattern about the roof, because they shut off that accelerated repair program.
Correct. That's why it's important for us. Yep.
So all in favor of this resolution, raise your hands. Steven?
Steve?
I'd rather abstain. I don't know what accelerated repair.
Oh, that, like, if you have an emergency repair that needs to be done.
An urgent repair.
An urgent repair that needs to be done, and that's something that the MSBA would reimburse you for, that they'll do that accelerated, that you don't have to go, you know, it's not like.
Repair the facility?
Yeah, yeah.
They consider, they consider your application immediately as an urgent need.
Okay.
As opposed to putting something in a pipeline.
Which you very well could be, yes.
Yeah, no water, no, like, I mean, water leaking, no electricity, no heat, things that need to.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, again, all in favor? Okay, unanimous on that one.
Mr. Small, this one's yours.
Yes, it's yours. Fred?
We've been talking about this for two years.
Bus stop, surveillance.
State Legislature was speaking on this as well.
When I saw this, I said, this is Mr. Small. Two years now, he's been talking about it.
So this one says that Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation to pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses, excuse me, live digital video detection monitoring systems for the purpose of enforcing violations against the owner of motor vehicle whose vehicle failed to stop for a school bus when required to do so by law. And further, that the Mass Association of School Committee calls on the Mass Legislature to enact legislation raising the fine for passing a stopped school bus to a significant schedule of fines as penalty, whether witnessed by a police officer or recorded by a digital video detection monitoring system. I don't think we need to read the rationale. We know that.
Motion to support, all parties. I do have a question.
Okay, second first? Okay.
Okay, who pays for it?
The state.
Great question.
Well, no, that's we would be.
Okay, for the actual fiscal. Sure, yeah, and the monitoring, it'll be the district. Is there a way that the $41.8 million tickets could get back to us? You know what I'm saying? That would be fantastic. I know the State House, the State Legislature was speaking about this. It was on an agenda item. I haven't had a chance to speak with. I mean, it would pay for itself.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, or, I'm sorry, Representative Sullivan, I haven't had a chance to speak with her, you know, to find out the result of where that might stand at this moment, but that is on my list of things personally to do.
I'm sure it is. Yes.
Does anyone know, it says it's a minimal fine. Does anyone know?
I doubt it.
I wonder what it is.
Can't be minimal.
It says, that's what it says, a minimal.
The one thing you've been afraid of since you were 16.
Well, right. But I just think that word choice is interesting, you know?
The thing, Glenn, I think, if they wanted to, if this came through in legislation, I'm sure there would be grant funding from Safe and Secure from the governor's office to make sure that all buses would have that.
Though covered, perfect.
Okay.
$200.
$200?
$200, that's what it is right now?
Yeah.
I saw it happen the day before yesterday, and I was just right by, and I was behind him, and I pulled up to the bus driver. We stopped in traffic. I says, did you, and he was in front of me. I'm like, do you want me to get his plate on video? And he said, no, they do it all the time. It's just so common.
It's wrong.
It needs to stop.
It needs to stop. Yeah. Okay, all in favor of this one? Okay, unanimous. Okay, related to MCAS. MCAS, MAS C urges Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-building strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input from legitimate stakeholders. That MAS C urges the state legislature to launch a comprehensive evaluation to investigate the extent of biases pertaining to MCAS testing and make these results public. That MAS C urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately, and that MAS C urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high stakes to MCAS tests.
Motion to endorse Resolution seven.
Second.
Okay. So, in case you don't know, the MTA is on a campaign right now to gather signatures to put it on a ballot, as a ballot question. Yes.
I'm going to take the unpopular stance as the teacher who teaches sophomore English. The devil we know is better than the devil we don't know. And I think the myth behind this, at least because our MTA rep came in and made it sound like they're going to get rid of it altogether, and it's going to be gone, and that last bullet, the MAS C urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test. It's not going away. They're talking about replacing it with something else. We know, like, like, teachers are, we've had the MCAS since 2001, 2000, 2001?
Yeah, somewhere.
Right? We know. We know what it is. And for high school, they just changed it in 2018. So we're still kind of like getting used to what it is, and we're there. And you can see statewide that, like, pandemic and things aside, things are happening. I just, I worry about this because I totally get it, and I understand the side of it, but I also worry about what's the alternative going to be.
Well, what MTA is actually standing up for is not be a graduation requirement.
Yeah, and Massachusetts is one of only seven states that has a, as handed this test.
And that's what the MTA is.
What do they mean by high stakes? What is that stake?
Graduation.
There would be some kind of evaluation done, but, and it could be MCAS, but MCAS not be a graduation.
I think it is currently saying that there is a high stake to this test. What is that stake?
That you have to pass it to graduate.
You do not graduate unless you.
That's correct. You do not get a diploma.
And what's passing? A D?
No, so there's.
It's profession.
Like.
Okay, and what do, and what do they mean by bias? What's this bias that they're talking about?
I can explain that. A lot of the questions are very biased as far as to.
Cultural bias.
White people.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't understand how that would work.
A lot of it, and a lot of it, that, like, if students are coming from another country, would not understand that type of a question.
Okay, okay. All right, so it's not, it's non-American instead of non-white. I mean, because if anyone grew up in this town, we'd all have the same growing up experience, no matter what color you were.
Right. So it's like, you know, it's a cultural, some of the questions could be cultural.
Okay, I would have to see them, like, questions about country music.
They're often biased. They're improving a little bit, but.
They are getting better at it.
They're getting better.
The problem, too, Glenn, is that, sorry.
I'm going to tie your card again.
But the problem, too, is that there's no accommodations for students with learning disabilities, students.
Those biases I understand.
Second language learners, so.
That I understand.
Every student, essentially every student has to take it and pass it, and the alternative is a portfolio requirement, which you have to petition to the state to be approved for that to happen.
Okay.
And so it doesn't happen that often. So you have students, you know, in a, in a Gen Ed classroom who might have an IEP or a 504 that have, you know, a page of accommodations of things they need. They'll get some of those accommodations, but they're still taking the same test that the kid in an AP class sitting next to them is taking.
Everybody's taking the same test.
And it's still measured against the same standards, the same way. So in that way, it's inequitable, too.
I get that. I get that.
The, the foreign language piece, you know, not foreign language, the, the second language learners, I have a student who just moved from Brazil this year, and he's gonna take the MCAS, and they might ask what he's gonna do on a snow day. The child may not have ever seen snow.
That's what they're, you know.
So, there are, certainly, it is a flawed test, to say the least.
Okay.
And, and one of the things that I have personally, have always against it being a graduation requirement.
Yeah, that's scary.
Is because I have a grandson who has Down Syndrome.
Yep.
He'll never be able to pass it and not be able to do a portfolio that would, why can't he get a diploma?
Yeah.
He goes to school every day, and he's been going since he was two and a half, is that right? Since he was two and a half. He'll be able to go till he's 22, and he can't get a diploma? He'll get a certificate of attendance.
Not, not good enough.
And one of my goals was originally to go to the State House and petition for that, so, you know, I mean, if this is, you know, I have a real personal thing, because I don't think it should be a graduation requirement.
I don't mean to keep this going, but I got another question.
No, I know it's important to have high stakes testing.
Yeah.
I agree. It's important to have some kind of, but it, but it depends, and now that colleges aren't even looking at it.
Well, colleges aren't even having to take SAT anymore, so, you know, you.
So, it really doesn't even become high stakes till your last test?
So, Glenn, there, there are three.
Okay.
Your soph, your freshman year here.
So, you stay a freshman if you don't pass?
No, no.
You proceed through. So, our freshmen take a bio exam.
Yep.
Okay? And you have to score, and you haven't looked at the new scores, they adjusted the scoring. You used to have to have a 220 or better.
Okay.
To pass it. If you didn't get a 220, you had to retake that test. In sophomore year, you took math and ELA, had to have the same score. Now they've adjusted the scores.
Okay.
The, the issue around graduation coming from an administrator.
Yep.
Test has its flaws, but you decide to move in from Arizona.
Yep.
Your junior year. You're taking an MCAS, you're taking three in classes you've never even taken in Massachusetts. So, that becomes really difficult. Or I take a student from Cardinal Spelman, who's never had our curriculum and has done something different.
I have, I have seven kids who have taken MCAS.
Yep.
And all of them have always had the attitude that it, it doesn't matter.
Until high school.
Until high school. So, that's one in itself, too.
That's a piece.
Like, my, my fifth grader right now was like, it's like a day of no class.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's a tedious.
I finished first, he told me. I finished first.
That's good. So, anyway, that's, that's just the, that piece of it.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, what does the research say about a high stakes test like this? What does the research say about the notion of teaching to the test instead of, you know, what we should be doing for our kids?
Absolutely.
So, I put that out to maybe Hillary, or you, someone that has a background in, you know, education and can speak to that.
I think we all know that.
Yeah.
We don't like teaching to the test.
I mean, and I like, I, I would tell you that we don't teach the test.
We try not to.
We try really hard not to. I think your science and math, it's more difficult because that's much more content-driven than ELA. But I think one of the really important things we have to remember, too, we're looking at this, if a student goes to Spelman, if a student goes to Archie's, they do not have to take the MCAS as a graduation requirement. So, students who can afford to go to private schools do not have to pass this high takes, high stakes test to graduate from those schools.
That's a bias.
And that's, that's a, that's a, right, and that's a bias as well. So, you know, and you could, you could go on the Dusty website and look at the school scores, and you can see your bias there, too.
One last question, I promise. Do you guys get to see this beforehand? Do you know what they're, they're being tested on?
No.
Okay, so there's no way to truly teach to it?
I will show you. We can't even, if we're proctoring a test.
Yep.
We can't.
You can't even look at what the students are doing. You can't, like, it is very, yeah.
But you kind of, you know, you know what they, they're applying.
The basic ideas, yes, yep.
So, I just, one of my, one of my questions, and I'd still love to have you guys speak to this, but what does the research say about high stakes testing?
Yeah, it's not good.
It's not good.
It doesn't support it?
No.
Thank you.
No, not at all.
Fred?
Never has.
We should look at a test for what it is. It's a measuring stick, and we should be able to measure our children as to where they're at. Use it so we can know how to improve both our teaching methods and their education without it having any ramifications.
That's right.
On them being able to graduate.
Yes.
Testing is a good thing. It's a good thing to know where you're at and what you know, but to use the data properly instead of holding it over your head, hey, you gotta pass this. There are some kids that will pass it with flying colors, but they hate testing, or the pressure gets to them.
Yeah.
You know, what harm are we doing to kids with that?
Yeah, right. I was always a stress test taker. I was always under stress taking a test. Yeah, it's difficult.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's get on to the vote, then. How do we feel? We have a vote, we have a motion already, so how many feel, so yes on the resolution? Raise your hands, please.
No, because the last, that last bullet point.
I count yours a no.
Okay. All right, and anybody, as no, one, and abstentions. Okay, so that passes with us. The last is the safe storage of firearms.
True.
Okay, so that is that MASC recommends all districts to urge their superintendents and staff to create an appropriate communication of parents and guardians that explains the importance of secure firearm storage, protect children and teens from unauthorized access to unsecured firearms, and their legal obligations consistent with mass safe storage law. That MASC urges other communities to work with their local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians their obligations to regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes and vehicles.
Motion to not support. Second.
Yeah, and I am a, I, I'm gonna do the first, I'm gonna speak first. I am one very much a strict gun person, but that's not our responsibility.
Yeah, that's my whole point.
That's, that's, we have enough responsibility, in my opinion, than to do this.
And there are, there are laws already on the books about all of that.
All of that, and so we don't.
If you're a gun owner, you already know that's common sense.
But I mean, for us to, it's not our responsibility.
No, not at all.
So, any other comments? Okay, so, motion to not.
To not support.
And do we have a second? Yeah, Glenn, you associated it. Okay. All in favor of not accepting this resolution, please raise your hands. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, David, you have?
I got them all right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you?
I was gonna vote no.
Oh.
So, it's, change it to one now.
One.
Hey, one?
Yep, yep, sorry. Okay.
Excellent, thank you, folks. Appreciate that. Public policy, so.
It's just number three.
It's a first read, so in your packet, the Policy Subcommittee has come up with a policy for your review. This is in the hands of our attorney as well right now. Andy has, has had no comment yet. He, he was away for a week and a half, so we wanted to expedite this, make sure you had an opportunity for first read to look at this. It, it's kind of a, through the Policy Subcommittee, took some ideas from different districts, had some really good discussion, took some feedback from, from the public in public comment, at the public comment piece of the Policy Subcommittee. So, this is your first read, and includes some things that we've talked about, and I think Mr. Kane actually referenced a few of the, the thoughts in, in the policy, so this is a first read.
So, first read, questions next time. So, it'll be on our next meeting. So, please read it over carefully.
Where was it, Dr. Chris?
Yes, Chris.
Just to tell you, one of the things we discussed was.
I saw it.
Including on the agenda, um, different avenues that they can pursue to engage. I just would like to see something like that from the policy itself.
Okay.
We did discuss that, right, Hillary, Michelle?
Say that one more time.
We talked about including on each agenda the different avenues that people can use to engage with the school committee.
Like putting this part on the agenda, this top part?
Did I miss it?
I think that's what we talked about, having that.
Two distinct ways that you can share.
Yeah, I feel like it's in here.
Yeah, I guess, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, all right.
One of the pieces that.
So, I'm sorry, can I just follow up?
Sure.
So, that, so all this verbiage is gonna, like, it doesn't say it's going on the agenda?
No, it's our policy.
Right.
Right, but we, we had said, I don't, I don't know if this was, I thought we, like, I don't know if it was part of our policy. I think it does say in here that this will be presented on the agenda. Um, yeah, number, item number nine, the agenda will also include the following regarding public comment, and it's all right there. So, it's there. How we discussed it.
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's covered precisely what we discussed. What do you think, Chris?
And I think the whole thing is, Chris, too, when we, if we vote on this, it's up to me to start giving that information before the meetings of how it's gonna be done, and it's up to the chair to present what the policy is.
Yeah, I actually, I just, I'd say that wasn't the.
You want it concise and.
Yeah, I just wanted to have something on each, I wanted our policy to say that on every agenda. We're gonna, you know, spell out the different ways that people contribute, but, like, I just wanted to say it's gonna be on the agenda, you know? I, I see the policy and I see what you're saying, but it was a stipulation that I was really concerned about and was, you know, I thought we agreed on.
Well, maybe you guys can discuss it.
Well, we have another Subcommittee meeting before we do this, right? Because this is the first read.
I mean, I'm not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill here, but you, you understand what I was trying to get to?
I do, but I think, I, I mean, I, I think it's in here.
Okay, so we're both, you guys have another meeting.
Yeah.
Before, so why don't you get that straight down?
I just wanted to before fight with the committee on what was discussed.
So, we're not discussing it now, okay? And you guys can figure it out, because it was yours.
And again, we're gonna get feedback from the attorney, too.
Yeah, yes.
So, this is your first read.
Don't have any questions.
We'll, we'll have another Subcommittee meeting.
Um, not for discussion, but would it be possible to hear from the Policy Subcommittee in regards to the section on presentations and public hearings, just to take some information away on that conversation, because that's new to this whole concept? So, can we hear something, so then we can go back and discuss the next one?
So, we, a lot of our conversation dealt with ways to engage the community, because the feedback we felt was negative in that we were trying to shut down public comments, so we talked about the different ways that the community can be engaged, not just public comments. So, one of the things with public hearing is if we notice that a lot of people want to speak to the same topic, maybe it's not a public comment, maybe we, because anybody can motion for a public hearing at any time. We can open a public hearing in the middle of a meeting, or we can say, you know, we need to have a public hearing on this matter, you know, we're gonna skip it on our agenda, and we're gonna schedule a public hearing. And that's something that anybody on the committee can do, or chair could do, in seeing it, if people are signing in. So, one of our things is sign in, and what do you want to talk about? So that we can kind of vet that ahead of time. And then the presentations piece, too, that was, I think, new, where we weren't aware that that, like, any citizen can email the chair or the superintendent and say, I would like to present at a meeting on such and such topic, as opposed to public comment, because when they present, we can then participate in dialogue, the same as a public hearing. We can participate in dialogue. Public comment, there is no dialogue between the committee and the citizen. So, those two allow that discussion to happen.
But it also is up to the, the chair.
Correct.
To decide if that is worthy of a presentation, too, so.
I have a follow-up on the public hearing topic. Does there need to be legal notice that a public hearing is going to happen? Because if someone motions, then someone at home, Martin, here's the next, I didn't know you have any.
So, that's why it's in council.
That's why the council's looking at it.
Yeah, I would think you can't, is that in policy that, or, or that a motion can be made to just open a public hearing?
Yeah, that's what we taught, we talked about that at our last meeting.
Oh, creating it?
Correct.
Oh, I thought you were saying it's already in, in place.
No.
Oh, okay.
Glenn?
Public hearing as, as opposed to a presentation, those are two separate things, right?
Two separate things, yeah.
So, the presentation would be like what Whitman Pride did?
Yes.
And that's open to anyone who petitions the chair to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair and, with the chair and the superintendent, yeah.
Okay. But you are discretion?
Yeah.
You can say no.
Yes.
Okay, without us saying no. Okay, without us saying no?
Yeah.
Okay. All good. I know the rules.
Yes.
I did have a question, and maybe it's a follow-up question for the Attorney. I know we're, we're calling this public hearings, or calling a public hearing. If the definition of a public hearing is something that the public needs to have notification of, but if we had our own policy, that the, you know, the way it's spelled out here, that a school committee member can motion to allow for public deliberation, say, we called it that, you know, and it's seconded and voted on the majority by the committee sitting at that moment, would that be an allowable mechanism without having to call it a public hearing?
That's...
Uh, we did discuss, um, making sure that the Chair has some leeway as to what can be done in the middle of a meeting. If the Chair still chooses to hear from someone, then that's the Chair's discretion. But I think that kind of covers it, as far as I'm concerned.
But I, 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 you're talking about language, and that's why I said, Andy, but I think one of the topics that came up, we specifically put in our policy about a sign-in, okay? People sign in and add what they were gonna speak about. Because we said, if you have 17 people here for public comment about, I don't know, pick a topic out there, and we would sit back and go, they're not gonna have their opportunity for three minutes a pop, for 15 minutes, to be able to speak. Maybe that's something we bring in for public deliberation? The Chair can see that and say, hey, wow, we have 18 people here. Out of, out of the agenda item, I'm gonna make a motion to have a public deliberation on X topic, which gives us that opportunity. So, hearing, deliberation, I think that's in the terms of the legalese of Andy. But that's the gist of why we want to have that. And again, we talked about public comment being open to the public, not just in Whitman or Hanson. This is a public meeting, anybody in the, can come from anywhere and speak on anything, especially if we add off the agenda or on the agenda. So, this is why we really played around with this policy, to make it work for our community.
Yes, Fred.
One other thought, if we're going to be memorializing a policy, should we be explicit in what is allowable during the comment? Or the presentation as far as naming people, naming teachers? We had that happen a few years ago, and it was wrong, and it was gavelled down immediately. But we had someone giving a presentation and was very derogatory toward a teacher, uh, and naming that person by name. I don't believe that that's proper or should be allowed.
Employees, it's not allowed, but I think with us, it isn't allowed.
Yeah, so that's the...
They can say whatever they want about me, but I'm talking about...
Employees, they can't.
Teacher, etc., just to memorialize if we're gonna have a sub-policy.
And I believe if that, when that did happen, it was gavelled right away.
Oh, yeah.
It was already said. I mean, you, you didn't know that was coming. So, so again, I, I think, again, this is our first read, and good discussion. And once we get, we'll have a Policy Subcommittee to discuss some of the thoughts here. And then it'll be on the agenda for either a second read or a vote in November.
Okay.
Good.
Yep, go ahead.
So, Whitman Middle School update, just a brief update. We have another public forum next Monday, out there in TV land.
Yeah, please come.
Please come to the, to the middle school cafeteria for a half-hour presentation and a tour. I think eyes on the building. If you get to see the building, you will hear information about the building, and then you get to see it in tour. We are open for a tour on Sunday, from 10 to 2, for the public as well. That'll just be tours, not a presentation. We are in the process of putting it on the town meeting agenda for the 29th of October. Right, it's the 29th? Is it the 30th?
The 30th. Sunday's the 29th.
Yep, the 30th. And then hopefully, if it passes town meeting, the building project will be on a ballot on November 4th. If anybody has any questions out there, I'm open to answering questions. There are members of the Building Committee within the community. All our information's posted on our website, and there's a specific website designed for the building project.
Wms.org.
Wms.org. We've been working very hard on this for multiple years, and again, publicly, as we get into, I don't, we're not gonna have a school committee meeting before that, but I just want to thank the members of the Building Committee for working so diligently and putting together a very good opportunity for the Town of Whitman with this building project. And I did want to add, I did hear from the FinCom last night. In Whitman, they voted unanimously, unanimously eight to zero, with one person not being there, to move this building project forward. So, that's a good thing for, for us.
And Fred is always posting also to Whitman Connect and a couple...
Whitman0232.
Yeah, yeah, so he's always posting the information, too.
Videos, another pertinent information that gets posted.
So, just come to town meeting, we're looking for people to come and voice their opinion.
Yes, please.
In the spirit of sharing information with families, what can the district do? I know they cannot use technology to say, "Vote yes," but sharing information? Is that something you can use the new school status and whatnot, just to inform people of the tour?
Yep.
And of the dates?
So, I will be using school status and just sending out, the forum is next week, the tours are next week, and then just the town meeting date.
Thank you.
It's being done. Okay.
John, you're up. John's the busiest man in the district. You're gonna have to speak up, too, John, the microphone isn't...
It's not working, okay. Thank you very much, good evening. The first topic is, I'm sorry?
No, it's not gonna work either. What's that?
For my microphone?
No, it's just up here. It's not articulated internally.
He's fine, you're fine, John.
Okay. Um, the first document is the, we're gonna be talking about food services or school lunch. I may go back and forth, because in my previous life, it was called school lunch, and it's getting late, so... But it's food services, and I have Director of Food Services, Nadine Dusset, who's been a trooper hanging on tonight. So, I just was gonna go over quickly the unofficial, unaudited FY23 actual amounts for the Food Services Fund, and then any questions of operational nature or anything else related to food service. I'll get out of the way and let Nadine take over. So, just for comparison to FY22, the cash amount, the first top, the top of the sheet is the balance sheet. The cash amount for, for food services is $1,043, again. I'm gonna round numbers off, so I can move fairly quickly. Due from federal government and deferred revenue intergovernmental, we had a, an amount of money that was due to us before June 30th, and the feds didn't send it to us at the time. That was $42,000, that's why it's on there. And then the reserve fund balance went from $654 in FY22 to $1,043 in FY23. We've had a significant increase of $389,000 there. The second part is the revenue and expenditure statement. Again, you can see the numbers there with revenues. Sales revenues are somewhat down. Federal revenue is considerably down, but state revenue is considerably up. So, the feds funded things in FY22, and then the state took over to fund things in FY23 to have, for universal school, I don't get universal, you know, there's... Universal school meals, I'm sorry. So, um, so the, the feds kind of backed up, the state took over and funded that amount. One of the things, the next line on revenue is interest income. It's a very small amount, I'm gonna have to be talking to our district treasurer. You see that type of cash, and you only see that amount of, of interest income. I'm gonna ask him what, but that's, that's what's in there as of now. And then for salaries, you can see for expenses, salaries were up over last year. But if you remember, we took several people that worked in the food services and brought them up to minimum wage. That was in 2223. I'm trying to remember when we did that, but that was part of that there. And then on the expenses side, there was mostly, we had some increases there in contracting services. We had some things break down, and replacement of equipment and technology. And that's, mostly that was the increase in expenses. So, the, the beginning fund balance was $654, the ending fund balance is $1,043. And the next question probably is, what's, what are we gonna do with that $1,043? We're working on a capital plan for all, all of these food service places in every school. And we're gonna be, we're gonna try to get every single asset we have and try to come up with a way to replace everything. We have several things that are failing. So, this money's gonna be put to good use, and it's gonna be food service-related. So, I, that was a very quick overview. If you have any questions about the financials, I could probably answer it. Anything else, Nadine's here to answer.
Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you for coming.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I had a request from a member of the gallery to move the part about Whitman Middle School debt discussion follow-up to the next one, if the, so that...
That's fine.
To get our Whitman Town Administrator out at a reasonable hour, so is that okay?
Yep, yes.
So, with, that's not an order yet, so I have to, I'll have to just wing it. The last meeting, I had a very broad overview of the questions that were necessary to start thinking about when the Whitman Middle School project passes. And, um, and one of them was, and I just wanted to put it on for this, you know, the next meeting, which is this one, to see if you had any follow-up or discussion about those things. There were seven or eight things that, oh, yeah, there were, there were eight questions, very broad questions. And I didn't know if you wanted to speak about any of those, and I leave the theory to...
Yeah, well, we've been talking about a lot of different things, and the Building Committee has, too. And I know Fred, we're talking about the responsibility of, because it's kind of two ways. I mean, the townspeople have to pay for it, but the school district bonds it. So, you know, you wanna be, have equal partnership, like we have done with other projects, too. So, Fred, did you wanna speak to it, too?
Sure, and, you know, not be willing to make the motion as well. The district is the borrowing conduit, so to speak. You're the folks that take out the actual bond. The bond's paid for by the Town of Whitman. There are two different ways of paying, as was alluded to by Justin earlier, the level principal or the level debt. Level principal is the way the Town of Whitman has always done things. That is probably the way they want to do this. What I'm saying is, the direction of how and which method is used should be up to the Town of Whitman, not to a school committee or a building committee, you know, diverse people, but the actual town. The forefathers of the town, if you will, of injunction, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, those are the folks that would, you know, be making a policy decision such as this. I would think that, I would make the motion that the Town of Whitman determine the type of borrowing that is done, whether it be level payment or level debt.
Okay, before, I have a question on that. I don't, I think the school committee has to vote on it, though, do they not? I thought the school committee had to vote on the bond.
We vote the bond, but what I think your motion is to have the Town of Whitman tell us...
Which bond?
Which bond?
Which bond we would be, we would be voting on.
Yes.
John? I just have a question, when you say Town of Whitman, who specifically?
The Board of Selectmen's office.
The Board of Select, the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen's office?
The Board of Selectmen, through their office. We would notify their office, the Board of Selectmen would make that determination.
Okay, so Fred, I'm asking the question to you.
Yep.
So, we would not have an opinion as far as what we prefer? Because I know there were some finance committee people who did not prefer that way. They'd rather be the $1,000 each year, the level debt, rather than the level...
And that would be up to them to advocate to their...
So, we wouldn't be able to have any advocacy?
Well, we could advocate ourselves.
Oh, okay, individually?
Individually, we could advocate. But I think a decision as great as this, and the amount of planning that this affects over the years, belongs with that appropriating authority.
Yeah, and, you know, I, the only thing that concerns me about the other one is I think more people up would be more palatable to the level debt versus the level principal.
It also would hand tie the town as far as what their borrowing capacities are. Because as a level principal would be concerned, your, your debt declines.
Yeah.
So, your capacities are increasing every year.
Okay, so how does that, so I guess my question is, can you explain to me how it affects the borrowing, like Justin talked about?
Sure, so, uh, with a level principal?
Yeah.
You have, similar to the high school, the high school debt is done in a couple of years.
And that was level principal?
That was level principal.
Okay.
The last payment on this, $350,000. Okay, it was a $52 million project, we bonded $26 million, split up 60-40 with Hanson. But we're down to just that $350,000.
Okay.
When you're looking at how much debt you're carrying, it keeps going down for this project, year after year. So, in year 15, you are theoretically at that level payment, that $1,000, and then it keeps going down from there.
Okay.
So, as you have the debt falling off, it gives the town that capacity, so to speak, for other projects and to keep, you know, to borrow more, without it affecting, you know, the ratepayer or the taxpayer.
I see.
That's the way, I've always known it to be done, that's the way Whitman's always done it.
No.
As far as that goes. With the level debt, you have that same payment. It's a lower payment, but you're always paying the exact same amount, number one. Your debt structure doesn't come down, and it's actually $19 million more on this project in cost that you'd be paying over the term for the luxury of having...
A lower...
A lower payment for a few years. So, but again, this would be the Board of Selectmen that would make the vote on it to determine the future of the town's finances, because it greatly impacts the town's finances. It's more than just the regional school district. So, that's where I feel...
If this isn't...
Do we have a second?
I know. Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Do we, do we have a second?
Oh, okay, only if someone seconds it.
Somebody's seconding it?
I can't do that till I...
Well, I'll second it, so we can have a discussion.
Okay. What does this have to do with us if we don't make the decision? Why are we discussing something that we don't decide?
Uh, because we kind of do, yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Chip.
Didn't get an answer.
Yeah.
The answer, because we're a regional school district.
Yeah.
We are our own entity. Two towns decided a regional agreement to decide to be in a region and hand over a set of rules, in essence, the regional school laws. So, we do hold the, the right to decide on this debt, and it's something both towns, at one point, said, go ahead.
Is everyone in agreement that we have a right to?
The law says we, as a regional school district, decide the debt, and we assess our member towns. That's the agreement, and that's the circumstance here, so that's why we do have this right. So, my, my discussion to this motion would be, I would not want to relinquish that right, if you will. I'm not saying which way I would choose to structure the debt at this point, but it falls on us. And even though there are four representatives who do not live in Whitman, you were elected to a regional school district, so we are charged with this decision. Charged with this decision.
Yes, Chris.
Yeah, I, I think I, I mentioned before about, you know, I guess the expectation that this kind of thing would be collaborative, right, like we've done in the past? And I, you know, we've all, we've talked a lot in the past about partnerships, right? And I just don't see a need to, to limit any of our, you know, ability to contribute to the conversation and just hand it over. I mean, I, again, I'm with Dawn, I'm not saying, you know, one way or the other, but I, I think we should preserve the collaborative nature of the partnership and not take it away and hand it over to Whitman. I can't see, you know, a scenario where we take a hard line against the town, you know, in support of one or the other. But I, I just think, you know, it's important for us to, to continue to collaborate and, and, you know, do that in good faith.
Are we being asked to hand it over?
Fred's motion is to.
Fred's motion is to.
Okay, no, okay.
Okay, more discussion, yes, Fred.
Yeah, and what it does is it puts it back to the folks that have their capital plans, capital planning. It's more than just about the school district, it's the overall picture of the Town of Whitman. That's why I feel they deserve the control as to what the borrowing method is. The building itself is in Whitman. The building is being paid for 100% by the Whitman taxpayer. It's nothing to do with the regional school district as far as the payment of that property and the payment of the building. It's 100% borne on the Town of Whitman. The school district arranges the bond and makes the assessment annually to the Town of Whitman for them to pay it. That's it. That's the extent of the school district's portion of this.
David?
I guess the other aspect of how I look at it is, does the Town of Whitman or Hanson pay our OPEP? They do not currently, but the Town of Whitman pays, the Town of Whitman's and Hanson pays for their own OPEP. Point being, as a regional school district, we have our own authority and our own autonomy to be on equal footing with both select boards in either town. And I feel by, you know, picking and choosing what autonomy we give to municipality, we're almost like giving our cake and eating it, too, to another town where they have, you know, the responsibility to make decisions that, you know, are within our own purview, but then they don't have the responsibility of also investing in, in other things that are come specifically with a regional school district, like OPEP, for example. To Dawn's point and to Scriven's point, you know, I don't, you know, feel a particular way towards, you know, signaling which way we need to go in terms of taking out the, the bond. However, I don't think it's in our best interest to give our autonomy away, especially we are a regional school district, there is mass general laws, and there's a regional agreement that overlooks our purview and what it is. So, I don't see why down, this point down in the road, towards the end of it, you know, weeks before, we go to make these decisions after years of work putting into it as a regional school district, why would we turn around and give our autonomy to a particular group of individuals? And that's not, you know, anything against the select board in that town. That's just, you know, what our purview is, and why would we give up that autonomy? It's almost a similar thought process as to the measure that was put forward in the Town of Whitman to keep the treasurer position as an elected one over an appointed one. The, the people in the community want to keep their autonomy and have that ability to make a decision, so why would we relinquish that one over? So, that's kind of how I'm looking at it.
I have, I had to have a question, I don't know if anybody can answer. What happened with Hanson Middle? Does anybody know, do you know that, Jeff, at all? Did, how that was bonded?
Level principal.
It was level Hanson, Hanson was level. So, we could tonight vote our, if we wanted to, vote what our preference is and give it to them to have a discussion, or are you, what I, I guess what I'm asking for, are you people, are the ones who are not for this, are you looking to meet with the Selectmen and have this discussion? Is that what you're looking for? If you're talking about collaboration, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it'd be a good idea to have the school committee meet with the Whitman Select Board and have that collaboration. I think it's a good way to offer them that opportunity, and I think it's a good gesture to have, because at the same point, it's almost a good compromise where you're not relinquishing that authority. However, to Fred's point, I mean, the Select Board is gonna be the people who, in some aspects, have to take on the, the results of that decision that's being made by us. So, I think it'd be good to have that conversation. And to Justin Evans' point during public comment, you know, just understand the perspectives of where they're coming from, and then we can talk about where we're at, and hopefully, by the end of that dialogue, maybe a motion can be made to, to figure out where we want to go as a community, yeah?
Glenn, over here.
Oh, Glenn, go ahead.
What's the time constraints on this? Is it something we need to do tonight? I would really...
I think it'd be preferable so that...
I don't know enough, I can't, I don't know which one would be best.
The thing of it is, you know, it's, do we want to let the people know what their payment's gonna be right from the get-go?
I don't mind that part. I meant, I mean the part about giving up, whether we get the say, or we give it to Whitman to say.
Well, somehow, well, if, you know, if, it depends on if they're gonna, if we're gonna put out there, this is how it's gonna be done, and this is what the payment's gonna... The bonding is not gonna be done right away, not till 2025, I believe, John, is that about right?
Once the project gets going, then we'll see what the...
Yeah, when the project gets going, so it isn't even starting like now, anyway, but, you know, you know, to... My point about that, you know, the people might want to know what is, yeah, you know what I mean? Before the vote, but, Dawn?
So, one follow-up is that we have leases for the Whitman Middle School? So, when the comment is made that, you know, it's the town's building, but the town leases the school to the district. So, that's again where I feel like the, the building does fall under our purview. And I think it's absolutely important that after we vote on Member Small's motion, that we do go ahead and... that we do go ahead and, and make a decision on structuring the debt, how it will be structured, because there is a town meeting coming up on October 30th, and residents are asking, "What is, what is the financial impact to me?"
It's either going to be $1,400 or $1,000.
Yes, it's a difference of, once the full debt is, is borrowed, as Mrs. Stambroff just said, you know, it could be a difference of, you know, upwards of $400 per year. Between those two ways, it would be structured. So we owe it to the people to make that decision, I do feel. We owe it tonight.
Men and Chair?
Yeah, Fred.
First of all, before, we know, you know the amount the first year is about $400, but then after that, it declines, so it may be under $400. Number one. Number two, the school district by itself has no means to pay the bond. Doesn't have the money. They do have the means to pay an OPEB and to pay off OPEB liability, so the two comparisons are vastly different. The town of Whitman is bearing the expense 100%, as far as that goes. Yeah, they lease the buildings to us for zero. Okay, as a legal entity has to, you know, give control of the building. And there are items spelled out of how the building's under control, et cetera, timings, fields, and whatnot, and who's responsible for what. That's why there's a lease in place. But emphatically, the town of Whitman, they're the ones that are making the payments. They're the ones that are having a town meeting. They're the ones that are having an election. They're the ones who are going to be living with whatever the debt is. This all passes. And those are the folks that have been elected and entrusted to make those capital decisions for the town.
All right, Hillary?
Um, I, I'm not suggesting same with Chris and Dawn about how I feel about it, but I think part of this narrative is, you know, the taxpayers in Whitman, the taxpayers in Whitman. And respectfully, I understand that the taxpayers in Whitman are going to pay for the school and fund the school and everything that comes with it. But to suggest that that doesn't affect Hanson is problematic, because if the taxpayers in Whitman have, you know, they should know what they, they're going to be paying. And if their tax bill's going up, that's going to affect our budget. That might affect what more they can afford and consequently affect the education that the students in Hanson are receiving. So to suggest that the Hanson members of this board don't have a leg to stand on in this conversation, there's a reason it's in law. There's a reason that it's there, because it does affect. Regardless, I understand and respect that I am not going to be, as a taxpayer in Hanson, I'm not going to be paying for the Whitman Middle School. However, it still will affect the education and the resources and the budget of the regional school district, which will affect the students in Hanson. And I just, that, there's a reason why, like, I've been sitting here listening when Dawn was like, "It's in law, it's in law." Well, why, well, that's why. So that, you know, I, I think it's really problematic to relinquish our, our role in that. If it's in law, if that's what the regional school district is supposed to do, then we need to do it.
Chris?
Yeah, just to respond to Fred's comment through you. We don't have the means to pay for our budget either as a school district.
No.
But we vote on what we, you know, want to see as our budget. So we have a say in that, and we have a say in this. I'm not saying to do it without the town's input, but I, I'm more of a collaborative person by nature. I'm not one to, you know, draw hard lines and take things away, and, you know. I think things have been well-established for quite some time in terms of the purview of the school committee, and I wouldn't want to see anything, you know, at this point to change.
Justin and Sean, could you come up here for a minute, please? Oh, Mary Beth? I didn't see you back there. Come on in. Come on up. I'll have you come up. So my question to you is, how would you feel about a joint meeting? So that we could hear the town's side? You know, everybody could hear and get that? Because it's going to be a joint thing. This whole thing is joint. So why are we going to make it separate at this point? And I'd like to see, because we're probably going to go, you know, with what you say is best. You know what I'm saying? But it'd be nice if we all could collaborate and do something together. So I'm asking your opinion about that.
At least, it seems to make sense to me yet where, you know, on prior borrowing projects, there's been some, at least dialogue, how we're going to handle this. No reason to treat this differently.
So we'll all be on the same page. That's what I'm looking, I want all of us to be on the same page and to have the same understanding that everybody does. And I, I think that's the way to do it. And maybe we could, I would love to see us do it before the 30th of October, so that we can have some, maybe a little bit. The numbers aren't going to be hard and fast, anyway, because things are going to change between now and 2025. Let's be real. We all know that. So, but to give, I like, if I'm going into an election, I like to know the numbers. I like to have a general idea. And I would think that everybody in the town would like to have that. And I think to say, you know, "Well, it could be this, or it could be that." I'd kind of like to know, "This is the number, but yeah, it could be different." We know it's going to, it could be different, because it's a couple of years down the road. But, you know, there's a big difference between $1,000 and $1,400, you know? And I, I, I just want to know your opinion. And if that sounds like a good idea, then I'd really like to see if Fred, you know, would take back your...
I will withdraw my motion.
Motion and do something like this.
Yeah, I think you should probably reach out to the chair and see if you guys can schedule either one of your meetings or ours to...
Yeah, well, we don't have another meeting before then, so, but...
Your next meeting.
Our next meeting is the 17th.
Next Tuesday.
Right, and the agenda's going out tomorrow. So the agenda has not been finalized, so...
So can any of our folks meet on the 17th? I know we have a building committee meeting.
Yeah, but we can get over there.
Yeah, we can get over there. Can I, do I have a majority of us who could meet in Whitman?
I probably wouldn't make it.
You probably wouldn't make it?
I wouldn't get home from work in time.
Oh, okay. Steven?
At what, what time would that be at?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Seven.
I could call, but it's around...
Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah. What do you think?
Yep.
Hillary? Michelle, what about?
Um, I don't know. I'm looking.
And Fred, you can make it?
I'm in charge.
I can make it. David?
Yeah, I can make it, yeah.
Can I ask, so possibly, would the, pretty sure, would the vote be taken at that meeting? Would that just be the dialogue, and then we would come back? Because your...
No, I think we'll vote.
The goal is that you would have it decided for...
Yeah, I think we'll do that. And, you know, between the discussion with them.
And I don't think, you know, we're not borrowing until, yeah, 2025, 2027. So there's not, there doesn't have to be a vote in advance, but if there's a sort of consensus, this is the direction that we all agree we want to take it. We'll at least have a number to present to town.
Yeah, see, that's what I would love, that, right there.
I think the consensus would be that.
Yeah, it is important. It's important to me as a voter, you know? So can you put us on the agenda, then?
Uh, we can ask the chair to put you on.
Could you ask? I can call Carl, but, Mary Beth, can you maybe intercede for me, please? Thank you.
That's okay.
And I think that would, that would help us. John?
John can't make it.
It's okay. That's all right.
May I ask, is the main discussion of how Whitman is going to pay back the debt?
Yeah.
If it's that, so that's what you addressed earlier, is that...
Yes.
Yeah.
For public comment.
Yeah.
And it made sense, you spelled it out.
Right. Do you want to have...
I'm not a financial guy.
Lower payment the first 10 years, or...
But you sounded like you knew what you were talking about.
We've been talking about this for a while.
So, I just want, you know, so that we are there, and they know how we feel, and we know how they feel. I just think it's important.
It is, it is. But we still have the authority to say, "Go that way."
Yeah.
With, oh, it's, it's just a matter of...
Yeah, but we want to do what's best.
Structure, yeah.
For everything.
I see.
For everybody. Okay? Sounds good. Dawn?
One last follow-up. Can we have those estimate figures in writing? Because I believe that, as a committee, we haven't seen anything in writing what the potential is.
Oh, yeah, you haven't, we have. I have, I keep forgetting, because as a building committee member.
Yeah, I don't think it's been presented to the committee. I mean, we're talking numbers right now, but we haven't seen anything. So, and Justin alluded to it.
Yeah, I'll give, I'll talk to them.
We'll send them out.
We'll send them out to everybody, so that you have them.
And of course, it's a projection with assumptions on interest rates.
Yes, correct.
But there is a difference.
So everybody will see. Whether or not you can make the meeting, at least you'll see.
Thank you.
Okay?
Will I get an email reminding me of this meeting on 17th?
We'll put it on your calendar.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got to post that anyway, right away.
We'd have to post it, yep.
Right away, because it's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, we have to get it out by Thursday.
Oh, okay. Well, that's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow. Today's Wednesday, right?
So as I said, we got to get it right out. You're welcome. Jen, you got that anyway, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to get finalized, we'll have Jen posted.
Yeah, yeah. Mary Beth's going to, she's going to do that. But in the meantime, we'll post it anyway, just in case.
We'll post it, yep.
Yep, sounds great. All right, John, so we, sorry about that, bud.
That's okay. So the next documents are, it's a capital projects update. It's documents two and three, if it's in your drive. If you're looking in the drive, if not, they look like this. There's two of them. One, one is sorted by town, and one is sorted by fund number. I like to use the one by fund, fund number. So this is just an update from our last meeting. We had some outstanding amounts that hadn't been paid by, by the towns, but I'm very happy to report it with, Whitman and Hanson did pay every amount that was billed to them before September 30th. So there, there won't be a deficit on any of those that were billed. And that doesn't mean there won't be any deficits, but there won't be any, there won't be any deficits on what was billed. So the, this is just a quick update on where we are. Last page has, you know, when the, things were billed and when they were received. It's just, the next one that you see will have the ones that are, have been zeroed out, taken off it. So this is kind of a last thing.
Men and Chair?
Yes.
Through you, to Mr. Stambroff. I just want to give a note of thanks for you getting everything in and also returning some funds to both towns, for the specialty for Whitman, as they'll be able to be utilized for other, other needs within the town. And being on the Capitol, I know we were discussing that Capitol Committee last week ago, two weeks ago, whatever it was. We do want to thank you for those diligent efforts, and it's appreciated.
Thank you.
So on that, Fred, this, this will be updated as we go. There won't be a lag. You know, this was a lag, because John was actually working on this pre-breach. So there shouldn't be a seven-year lag on a project. It'll be updated as we go.
So the only, only deficits that I see right now out of the capital projects funds are items that I didn't get a chance to build before, before September 30th. One of them was, it's going to be elevator repairs. There was a special town meeting in Hanson for the middle school. We, I just didn't get a chance to build them, and it's about $11,870. And then we had some RTU replacements, and I'm trying to remember what RTUs are, means is...
Rooftop, rooftop units. Unit, I think.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Those combined, that was a high school-related item, that was about 21,000. And then there was one item where some wording got inadvertently changed in Hanson on security door card access systems. The wording was changed to just Hanson Middle and Indian Head, but it was supposed to be related to high school. So that money's still sitting there, and at a, at an upcoming town meeting, I'm sure Hanson will change that wording to the proper wording. So all, what I see right now, I went through 6,212 invoices, one by one, what I see right now, it's about 53,000 in a deficit, so it's kind of where we were last year, but it's a combination of three or four things. And again, I did the best I could with the limited time I had. Any questions on that? Okay, no, keep going. All right, so the next is the, moving on to the new Munis report, it looks like this, it's document four in the drive. If you knew how, what it took to get this report, you'd see, you'd know exactly why I'm smiling. So these are, this is what the fiscal year 2013 report is going to look like. Again, the, you know, the, the codes are different, again, I know it's late, but the, the codes are, you know, the question might be, why not just copy the old codes over from Munis into this new, the new Munis we set it up? Why did you make new codes? I made new account codes because I wanted to make the report be, you know, show the way it's supposed to be reported at the end-of-the-year report to DESI, the Department of Elementary and School Education. Also, the, the old report took a lot of Excel manipulation by me or whoever was, was before me in order to get the report, you know, to get the numbers in the end-of-the-year report the way it should be. I've done my best to actually show it the way that it should be, and I won't have to do all of that work, and plus, all of that work is gone due to the breach. So we're going to report the thing, the expenses, the way it should be in the end-of-the-year report, and I won't have to do any other, you know, Excel calculations in order to extrapolate numbers out. And also, sooner or later, I won't be doing this job anymore, and someone else will come in, and hopefully that's not for a long time, but you never know. So, someone from Pittsfield would be able to come here and take, and as long as they know the state coding, and they have a, they know that we have a numbering system in the school from 1 to 9, they'll know what these numbers mean. The code actually means something. And not to bore you with, but I'm just going to pick one, so this is on page two, the district-wide school committee clerical salaries. You see, it's, the number is 01, that's the general fund statewide, then it's 10, that's our district-wide, then it's 1110, that's the DESI code for, for school committees, and 5200 is the DESI code for clerical salaries. So you don't, you need to know much about the, the district, or you don't need to memorize codes as like I had to. You'll be able to look at the number and get a fighting chance of what it actually is from afar, not, without knowing a lot. So it's a big deal, at least I think it's a big deal, we try to number, number things the way they should be numbered. The, you might say, why are there, there's a number, original column, and then there's an amended column.
Trying to get any.
And that's not because there's some, you know, some, some weird thing happened, it's, I punched the 23 budget in, and it went, the 24 budget in, and it went into 23, and Munis can't fix it. So, that's what it is. So I had to make all the adjustments in the adjustment column, but that is the budget, and, you know, at your leisure, you could take a look at the breakout of the codes. Again, document five is the, what I call the translation table, the Rosetta Stone between the old codes and the new codes. And document six is the fund translation code from the old codes to the new codes. And then document seven, it was the, the breakout of, the, under the old Munis system, every student activity invoice and receipt was dumped into one bucket, and it took a long time to try to break it all out into each individual, you know, where, you know, where it was supposed to go. So I, what I did was I created a fund for every single student activity fund, so we'll be able to reconcile student activity very quickly once we get up and going, instead of having to waste time.
Right, thanks.
Taking 10,000 lines and trying to figure out who paid $50 where.
Excellent. Dawn?
Yeah, just for clarification, because you picked the line and you said school committee, oh, clerical salaries. So can you just, I want to make sure, I know I don't get a salary, as a school committee member.
Not clerical.
So that would be clerical for our reporter.
Yeah, just...
For people watching the video down the road, there's no committee salary, no.
No.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Good point.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. And I bet you're happy that all that Munis thing, part of that's done anyway.
Yep, so I, I just have two things that weren't on the agenda, but I think are important. So you all probably should have received a survey and an email on, we're doing dual, two-factor authentication.
I didn't get it.
Okay, you didn't get one?
No.
Okay, so, so Jen, on the all-district staff, the school committee is not on all-district staff, so I will send you out an email. We are moving forward to dual factor authentication.
Great idea.
So you're going to have two different ways to do it, if you so choose. One's going to be an app on your phone, so when you want to log in, there's an app, no big deal. Or you can ask me for one of these key fob things. So we've offered two to our staff. Staff has to purchase this, because we're offering an actual, and we work with the association, a free authentic, but some staff don't want to use their phone, so they're going to purchase these for 22 bucks.
Is the app through Secure ID or RSA?
No, it's called Duo app. I have it for work.
It's Duo. Yes, Dave.
How does that work? A key fob?
So the key fob is, you'll get this, when you want to log in, a number will pop in and use that as your authentic, I keep, I want to say authentification. I don't know why I want to put the F in, but this will work as well.